Hello, hi. Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Board of Education. It is now brought to order on Monday, May 7th, 2018 at 7:07 PM. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome each and every one of you here. Your attendance this evening shows your interest in public education and is greatly appreciated. At this time, we'll start, um, we have, um, is it? We have five students? Am I reading that right? How many students do we have? Fred, on your, how many students do you have? Is it five? I want to make sure I'm reading this right.
I have, uh...
Five? Four?
Five.
Five, okay. We have five students. From Edison Elementary come, come forward. So I need to have, let me see, Winter Watson, Jaden Walden, Gabriella Mazzello, Gerald Raymore, and Jacob Lynn. Please come forward. And they're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. We're going to face the flag this way here, okay? All right. Whenever you're ready, sweetie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So Mrs., um, Heinz is going to read your bios. Do you have the bios there?
I have Winter Wat- Watson. Okay, so my name is Winter Watson. I am nine years old. This is my first year at Edison. And I have lots of friends and learned lots of things. My teacher is Ms. Case. When not at school, I am a dancer at Motor City Dance Factory, and I enjoy making slime.
That's fun.
Now, next we have Jaden Walden. My name is Jaden Walden. I'm nine years old. And I am an older brother of three sisters. Wow, that's a lot of sisters. I also have a dog and a cat. My hobby includes reading and building and making things. I would like to be an engineer when I am older. One interesting thing about me is that I am bilingual. That is fabulous. I speak English and Albanian. The best experience I've ever had was my vacation to Disney World. The most important thing to me is my family and friends. Next, we have Gabriella Matoli. Hi, my name is Gabriella Matoli, and I am eight years old. I live with my mom, my dad, and two older sisters along with my dog. Three cats and two bunnies.
I'm a Girl Scout, and I have been in Scouts for four years. I have been ice skating since I was two and a half years old and have been competing individually with the Arctic Edge Unity Synchronized Ice Skating Team. Other things I like to do are travel, swim, ride my bike, and play outside in my backyard. Which is great because lots of kids don't play outside. My favorite food is fruit, vanilla ice cream, and pizza. And we have Gerald Raymore. Hi, my name is Gerald Raymore Jr. I am eight years old. I go to Edison Elementary, and I am in the third grade. My family is pretty big. It includes me, mom, dad, and my little sister, who is the best kid. I have five pets, three fish, one dog, and one turtle. My favorite pet is my dog, Marlo, because he loves me so much. I like playing video games, and most of all, I love going to school to learn new things every day. And our last one is Jacob Lynn. My name is Jacob Lynn. I am nine years old, and I'm in Mrs. Gorski's third grade class. I love animals. I have one dog and two birds. My favorite thing is to play other than video games is volleyball.
Wow. So if you stay right there, Dr. Weaver's going to come down, and he has something to give you from the Board of Education, okay?
Well, thank you for coming to our board meeting tonight. You are the reason that we come here every month to make sure that we're providing you the best education. Now, we're going to do this a little bit differently tonight because usually we go with one, two, and three, or whatever, for who you brought with you. But what I want to see is hands if you belong to any one of these kids. And tell us who your principal is.
Ms. Watson.
Watson here?
Yeah.
Where are you, Ms. Wa-? There you are, Ms. Watson. Yes, let's give her a big hand. So thank you for leading us in the pledge of allegiance. And this is another one for Gabriella Maddioli. Did I get that right? Winter Watson. Jaden Walden. The engineer. Jacob Lynn. And you have to be Gerald Raymore Jr., right? There you go. Let's give them a great big round of applause.
We have, Jordan has on a green shirt, and he's going to meet you in the front lobby, and he's going to take your picture so that we can put you on the website. And know that, um, as you are recognized, you don't have to stay. Our feelings don't get hurt if you decide to sneak out. So we just kind of do it a little quietly. So their parents, if you want to meet them in the front. And, um, we appreciate you coming. Thank you so much. And that's for everyone that's getting recognized. If you want to stay, you're more than welcome to stay. If you want to leave, you can leave. Um, we're going to go to 356.18. Roll call. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Present.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Madison?
Present.
Ms. Madell? Ms. Walker? At the record show seven zero.
So before we move on to the rest of the agenda, we have two amendments we have to make to the agenda. Um, and they're both are going to be done with separate motions. So the first one is a motion to amend the agenda to follow to add 361.18D. Business services and finance items. Recommendation to purchase iMac computers with Apple Care to the, um, agenda. Can I take a, at this time, I'll take a motion?
So moved before.
Moved by Mrs. Ma- Madison. And who was the support?
Heinz.
And supported by Ms. Heinz. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
At the record show seven zero.
Thank you. Motion carries. The second one will be to add motion to amend the agenda as follows. To add 363.18, item C, human resource items, administration personnel to the agenda. This item will be moved from the consent portion of the agenda. Moved by Mr. Cox. Supported by Ms. Heinz. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. Walker?
Yes.
At the record show seven zero.
Thank you. Now, moving on to item number 357.18, recognitions and presentations. Dr. Holt.
Thank you, Madam President, and welcome, everyone, tonight. Uh, the first recognition, we want to have, um, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Rebecca Peck, our Assistant Superintendent of Professional Learning and Accountability. Yeah, and she's going to let us know what our first presentation will be.
Our first presentation tonight is, uh, the YMCA Camp Scholarship. Today, we have four recipients for the YMCA Camp Scholarship. These are sponsored by North Brothers Ford in Western. Um, I would like to introduce Ms. Ashley Duff. She was here representing North Brothers. Uh, she's been working closely with the district to implement this program for the summer of 2018. So right now, we have, I'd like to introduce and bring up our four recipients for the summer of 2018. So if you could come down here and just line up for me. William Walden from Franklin Middle School. Emily Franklin from Franklin Middle School. William Phillips from Franklin Middle School. So I'm going to steal something out of Dr. Weaver's playbook, and I'm going to ask anybody that belongs. Four young learners here, raise your hands.
Thank you, welcome.
So I want to today just to give you a little background on the YMCA Scholarship. North Brothers Ford has sponsored this program for about 16 years. There are two different scholarships in which we don't create students. At each middle school, we're currently teaching them. The students have the choice of which YMCA campus they want to attend. The students choose the lucky winners. They didn't do it by luck. They completed an application, and they chose between two topics to write about. The application essay, they returned a proposal in the building, and the proposal was their selection is related to all of the applications. So they selected these scholarships and they decided to do this. Uh, we would like to congratulate the hard work that you put in all of you along, and we hope that you play hard and raise expectations in summer. Uh, and North Brothers Ford is sponsoring this program. Stephanie has a certificate for you. And these are camping events. Yes, from each, for each of you. We have in the camping bags, we have water bottles, which you need to stay hydrated. We have, it looks like sleeping bags, you need to stay warm, a towel, because what was camping without swimming is very, uh, it's, oh, there's flashlights and turn shows. Everything that can be appreciated. So thank you so much for all the work that you do on the. Did the North Brothers have anything to say? Did North Brothers have anything they, they wanted to say, or no? They're representative, okay.
All right, thank you.
So we're going to do the same thing. If you can, with parents and families, we're going to do a round of applause. Congratulations.
All right. Can I just continue?
Do you think it's quiet enough for you?
Mr. Cooper, you ready to go? Can you hear me? So, uh, next, I'd like to, uh, introduce someone who I personally asked to come and present. Uh, a few weeks ago, I got an email. And oftentimes, I get things to just tell me where to be, and I just go wherever they tell me to be. Typically, where, where Ms. Watson tells me to be, I just go. She's like, you have to go to this, you have to go to this. I had no idea what I was going in to see. And as I walk in, I see a room full of our kids. And, um, Mr. Cooper and his, uh, co-teacher, Mrs. Bearman, who's probably hiding somewhere. She's here. There she is. And, um, it was so impressive to see our students doing their very first TED Talk. And I wanted to give him an opportunity, and him and the students an opportunity to share some of the great things that are happening in Wayne Westland, because here in Wayne Westland, we share the good news. Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. Good evening, board members, Dr. Holt, Central Office Administrators, Dr. Rudolph, uh, parents and students, lots and lots of parents and students. It's good to see you tonight. Uh, we're here to talk to you about this presentation. It was actually three weeks ago tonight. It was the Michigan Department of Education Top 10 and 10, um, roadshow. And, uh, Michigan Department of Education went to six different, um, resees, if you will. And we happen to be, um, two of the presentations that were at Wayne County. And this is a fraction of, I think, by 10:11 of us tonight. There were 38 that came to us that day. Uh, Dr. Holt was part of the festivities, as was Dr. Rudolph as well, two of our principals. Um, so anyway, um, what we, what we came for was a little bit of a presentation to tell you a little bit about how we're trying to implement next-generation science standards into our biology, accelerated biology classrooms. So I'm going to give you just a fraction of kind of what we did in our hour and fifteen minute presentation. I promise you it won't be longer than an hour and five minutes. It should be around eight minutes, so, um... So anyway, um, Ms. Bearman, who's here, is my collaborative teaching partner for two of the five hours that we teach. Um, and so this, this next-generation science standard approach is, is different than, um, how a lot of us may have learned to science. A lot of times, it used to be that, um, we would culminate units with labs. Um, and that's how we would kind of master things. But, um, I don't know if any of you are at Wayne Memorial in biology. Are any of those biology students at Wayne Memorial in this studio audience? All right, so you guys are doing the same thing. What we try to do is we try to start, um, a unit with a phenomenon investigation. We try to start with the students' conceptions and misconceptions. We work backwards from there and do really great activities. That's what we're going to talk to you briefly about tonight. So when we do a phenomenon investigation, we try to identify a phenomenon that we think is fascinating and links right into our unit of study. Very much, a big part of what we do are student models. So the students create models. We try to put in two dimensions, or sometimes three-dimensional examples of what it is that we work with. Then they create what's called a whiteboard. And they have all kinds of examples of them over there. But it doesn't matter because there's so many people in the room, you wouldn't be able to see them anyway. But we do this all the time. It's how we do business. Also, what we have the students do is we try to have them, uh, develop a graph or a chart to interpolate the data and try to apply their specific data of that phenomenon investigation. And then we do something called, um, argumentative conversation. An argumentative conversation is a really inherent piece of NGSS where we have the students take their data, um, and I'll talk more specifically about it. But it's a way that they can, uh, apply their data and have what's called scientific reasoning and argument with one another. And then we wrap it up with what's called a driving question board, and I'll talk briefly about that as well. That's your overview. All right, the specific phenomenon investigation, we're going to see examples of, comes from, um, Argumentation in Biology, thirty classroom activities from Sampson and Schleyer. That's up on the boards for you to see. Uh, basically, what we looked at was the data chart for this particular example. There were twenty-four snapshots in time between 0.01 million years ago to 555 million years ago. And we basically compared fossil records and the number of species within eight families to see what we can learn. And what you see up on the, on the screens around you are examples of some of those student models. As I say, I've really chopped this down from what we did at our presentation. And you can see what they tried to do is show us examples of going back in Earth's history, different examples of plants, I'm sorry, of animals, um, that were in existence from the different families, species within the families. As I go through each of them, you can see just the different combinations of things. And again, there's all kinds of them on the boards that you can't see over there. But it's just really kind of cool how, uh, the students were able to research and figure out specific examples of, um, what's going on in our Earth's history. Speaking of student models, I don't know how this happens, but my grandson Reed seems to pop up all the time in these presentations. I try to make him stop, but the kid just won't listen. He's only eighteen months old, too. So anyway, continuing with the student models, part of what's cool is we ask them to personify. You can see, uh, Kiana's not here tonight, but you see Kermit the Frog there at the very top, which is pretty cool. And also, a really neat aspect here, as you can see, not only the example of the families, but those numbers within, tell you the number of species within a family. And in this example, you saw that they actually looked up what the different periods were in Earth's history, which is pretty cool. That brings us to our graph and charts. Uh, so we're always about data. We want kids using data, looking at their specific data. The district was so supportive of us, of us to have Chromebooks, and so we want to make use of it. And I think we make pretty doggone good use of it very often in our classrooms. So anyway, here's an example of what one of those charts looks like. Uh, you've got the different species arranged with the different families. Uh, here's another one. This picture of a great chart with Sarah's thumbnail. Sarah's not here today, but Sarah's thumb is. And then here's a really great example of a, of a graph where they've taken out, we had them look at five different, um, families, and you can see how they broke them out. And it's just kind of interesting to look at over time how amphibians and insects and bacteria, fungi, algae, and reptiles and animals, or mammals, I should say, have, have, have changed and fluctuated with extinction events that occurred during the course of history. That brings us to whiteboards. Whiteboards is that real focus of what, um, we always try to, to have the students replicate in every single phenomenon investigation that we do. It's always set up in the same manner, and it's the basis of our argumentative conversation. And just to give you an idea, here's some examples of those whiteboards. It's not so crucial I go into the specifics, but just that you understand that this is how we do business. Um, and I also ask you to put at least three or four colors on each of those to make it more interesting for me, so I don't, um, die of boredom. It, it just, I love the data, but sometimes this questions it up a little bit, and also, that's the kids display their artistic abilities as well, too. Here's another example. There we also get the guiding question, the claims, the evidence, and the justification for evidence. And then again, is my grandson Reed. I don't know what to say.
Reed's adorable.
So when it comes to argumentative conversation, um, basically, it comes down to this. One student stays back. We usually try to arrange them in groups of three. And, um, they stay back with the whiteboard graph or chart, and the models to explain what the group's claim is, what the reasoning and logic is. And they stay back, and they're called the goalie. All right? You don't have to wear a mouthguard or anything. It's not usually physical. Our other team members travel from group to group to listen and argue scientifically aspects of claim and evidence. And then they justify their evidence that supports the claim. If they see good ideas out there, it's their job to steal those ideas and bring them back to their group, though, much as engineers will, because this is all about the engineering standards out there. And then last, all groups have completed their circuit. They have one last chance to modify their claim based on their conversations. When it all wraps up, we pull together for a full group discussion. We try to, at that point, kind of talk about what are the conceptions? What are the misconceptions? And try to make it as student-led as possible, trying to take their ideas and move forward. All right? And then that's how we try to come back and, uh, wrap up the phenomenon investigation. But we do it in terms of driving question boards. Now, this is a late addition that we've only used for the last part of the semester. Um, this tool is used to understand concepts in which students still have misconceptions, or maybe I felt like I taught it and the kids didn't absorb it. It identifies possible priority expectations, that we like to call PEs for short, or key instructional components intended for mastery, but perhaps they weren't mastered for whatever reason. It also allows for the instructor to better target areas swiftly. Uh, allows us to be able to do that through, uh, readings, YouTube videos, identify TED Talks online, um, and reinforce these areas. We want to use the technology that we have in our classroom to be able to do the research that really makes it specific for these kids. And then sometimes the questions, as you can imagine with a wonderful group like this, the questions go beyond. And I realize I'm talking to someone that's actually more intelligent than I am. And that's okay, too. Um, at those points, we may, if it goes beyond our, our priority expectations, then it may become an extra credit research type of project that they can go into, which is kind of a new way to go. And here's an example of a couple of our driving question boards. And we put the main idea there on the board. We have the students write down, uh, sticky notes from each group. What questions were answered? What additional questions do they have? And what we try to do then, at that point, at the wrap-up of this, is identify what, what hanging participles do we have? What dangling participles do we have still that are out there? Here's another one from our fifth hour, that again, talks about, you know, those, those red circle words are the ones that I put together that were the big common ideas that I thought were the big chances here. Let's talk about the students here real quickly. I think we're real close here. So here we have Riley and Megan, hard at work, uh, constructing their data while, uh, in a meaningful graph. Jessica, Mike, and Kenzie pose as they're putting their numbers together. Isabella, John, and Austin are looking pretty confident in their approach. Emma, Zinaf, and Karina pull together as a team. Asia, Zuriel, and Sarah proudly display their whiteboard and model slash chart. And what's cool about this is that Sarah's holding a combination of model and chart. She has a very unique way of expressing herself. And that group particularly blended the two into one, and I thought it was a great idea and absolutely went ahead and proved that. Yeah, here, we got the dream team of Bella, Lily, Emma, and Shannon are confident that they're ready for argumentative conversation. And believe me, they're always ready to argue. It's a good thing, though. Kiana, Lauren, and Trinise take a moment amidst their models, graph, and art supplies. Erin, Julie, and Angelina, and Haley are eager for their next stop. Kathleen, Lily, and Madison ooze confidence as they put the finishing touches on their projects. Abigail and Audrey flash their smiles as they continue to dig for data. Aiden and Connor are saying, "We got this," while Chase is flat-out looking mysterious. Sarah and Monique divide their tasks to prepare to discuss this phenomenon investigation. And that wraps up the students. So, in a nutshell, that's pretty much what we do. It's pretty much how we do business. And I'm just proud to be able to work with incredible colleagues and incredible students. I hope I tell them often enough. And that's, that's what we have for tonight. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Cooper, thank you for coming in and sharing that with us. If you'll take your students, we'd like to have a photo of you and your students as well.
Absolutely.
So they'll be out in the front. Look for, uh, Jordan. He has on a green shirt today, they told me.
Thank you, President Walker.
Can I say something to Mr. Cooper before?
Yes, you sure can.
Mr. Cooper, you and I have known each other for a very long time.
Yes, we have.
When we met, you were teaching science over to Adams.
It was at junior high school back in the day. We don't have any of those.
Don't date me, because I'm old enough as it is. And just having celebrated Star Wars Day, I'm going off a little onto Star Trek. And I am a big Star Trek fan. And one of the things that happened in one of the movies where the two captains were talking, and one captain was giving the other advice, and he said, "Don't let them promote you. Don't let them change your position, because while you're there, you're making a difference." And sir, do not promote, go anyplace else, because you are making a difference for our students.
Here, here.
Rate where you are.
Here, here. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Madell.
Ms. Heinz has something she wants to say.
Yes, I'd like to really, I appreciate what you're doing. We were just talking about innovative learning in our last board session, what you're doing, having the kids think outside the box, making it fun. So I really appreciate what you guys are doing with our students.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
So as you can see, tonight is a night of celebrating the great things that are happening here in Wayne Westland. And in addition to excellence in academics, we also have excellence in a variety of other activities. And so with that, I would like to invite up our Wayne Memorial High School boys' basketball, uh, team, who is going to be introduced by their principal, Mr. Kevin Weber. Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Holt, President Walker, members of the Board of Education and our listening audience. Thank you all for supporting our students at Wayne Memorial High School, and thank you for recognizing the outstanding achievements of these students. I have a couple different student groups I'd like to recognize. And so as soon as I'm going to call your group forward, if you guys would just head down there and as I introduce your group. And then when you guys are done, we'll kind of head out, and I'll go through each group. So the first group I want to recognize is our Wayne Memorial High School girls' basketball team.
Fabulous, ladies.
I had the privilege to spend an afternoon with several of these girls as they joined me in reading to several elementary schools this winter. This may have been one of their best performances of the year, too, including all their basketball games. It was a joy to be around such a positive and wonderful set of students. These young women are outstanding students, citizens, and of course, basketball players. They have carried themselves with dignity and filled our hallways with Wayne pride. Coaches, I'd also like to recognize you. The countless hours in the gym would not happen without your countless hours in the gym as well. This team had many accomplishments. They are the division champs, KLA champs, district champions, regional champions, and made the Class A Final Four. When, please join me in recognizing our great talent. And as I said, they are outstanding academically as well. They were Academic All-State.
All right. Excellent. Well, yeah.
So the individuals, do you want me to call their names here?
Sure, yes.
Alana Michu.
Just raise your hand so we know who you are, maybe.
Janay Terry. Jaya Hicks. Gloria Jarvis. Kayla Gray. Samaya Hoskin. Cameron Clegg. Alana Brodnix. Jasmine Elder. Michelle Gaines. Michaela Briggs-Ziegler. And our coaches, our head coach, Jarvis Mitchell, and our assistant coach, June Mitchell, Keisha Webster, Jeff McKinney, and Eric Cotton.
Thank you. You're awesome here, and on behalf of the Wayne Westland Board of Education, goodbye for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Great job.
And Mr. Weber, I believe we have a couple, a student or two who's going to college, and some coaches of the year. I'm not sure if I'm...
We do. Our coach was recognized as the Michigan Coach of the Year, and... And one of our seniors was recognized as a Miss Basketball candidate. She was runner-up.
All right.
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
So stop in the front with your certificate, take a picture, so we can show you off to the district, okay? Thank you so much for coming in.
Congratulations. The next individual I'd like to recognize is a member of our boys bowling team, Anthony Anthony was named All-State, and he was invited to the Detroit Free Press Awards Ceremony, which will be coming up later in May here. Please join me in recognizing Anthony for his outstanding performance.
Congratulations. I'd like you to accept this on behalf of the entire team, and also, I'd like to thank for working with all of us.
The next group I would like to recognize is the Wayne Memorial High School Ethics Team.
Yes.
Ethics is similar to debate, except, as an ethics person would point out to you, that it's really not anything like debate. However, for the layman folks out there, it's similar enough that it should work. These students have spent countless hours preparing, like athletes prepare for a sport, except they have read, they have written, they are thinking, and they're collaborating all around complex ethical issues. Their teamwork is truly amazing, as they have just minutes to formulate a position and prepare questions for the other team. This truly requires students to think on their feet. The students here today are the Michigan State Ethic Bowl Champions. They recently represented Michigan as they competed at the national competition. Please join me in recognizing the following students. Siobhan Patel. Kushi Patel. Ashley Hyland. Sarah Craig. And Kareem Garob. And then coached... And then they are led by our coach, Mr. David King.
So, Mr. Weber, is it true that this is the second year in a row?
This is the second year in a row for the...
Okay, second year.
She's going to get this out.
Yes. Thank you. We're so proud of you.
Great job.
You have definitely made us proud the last two years, and I know you're going to keep on doing it. It's going to have a streak. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
The next group I'd like to recognize is the Wayne Memorial High School Percussion Team.
You sound like a drum roll or something.
These students have performed exceptionally well in a variety of local competitions, as they truly marched to their own beat. And it is this beat and rhythm that led them to be finalists at the WGI World Championship. Please join me in recognizing the following outstanding musicians and instructors. We have Karen Hernandez Zarati. Cheyenne, I don't think she's here. Sidney Matyska. Grace Dyeroff. Connor Radke. Fabian Anes Bacarraro. Jaden Ellis. Crystal Hendricks. Stephen Ambrose. Bailey Malefent. Andreas Ocha. Sierra Raymond. And our instructors, Andy Brokaisen, Sarah Orin, Patrick Brown, and Matt Dyeroff.
Thank you for always being there. Always representing Wayne pride and making our district so proud. Thank you so much. Either way, you'll be there very much.
Thank you so much.
That is it for Wayne Memorial High School. Thank you.
What about the R O T C? Um, Mr. Weber, okay, did we have the boys basketball team? I'm sorry?
The boys basketball team and the J R O T C cadets as well.
Okay. We'll have the, we have the, these certificates for you. You can take them back and give them to them on behalf of us.
Thank you so much, Mr. Weber and Wayne Memorial High School. I would like to now invite our principal of John Glenn High School to introduce our John Glenn Wrestling Team and our John Glenn Wrestling, uh, John Glenn Wrestling Team and the J R O T C. I said the same thing twice. Thank you, Mr., Dr. Rudolph.
Adjust the microphone a little bit taller than Mr. Weber. Good evening, Dr. Holt, Madam President, Board of Education. Can you all hear me? I'm trying to be as loud as I can. So today, I have two distinct honors to introduce. One, our wrestling team, please step forward, coached by Bill Pope.
These are the guys that I don't mess with in school. They know a couple of things that I don't know. So this year, Coach, what do we finish in the state? Come on, Mike.
We're going to get team state finals. And then we had five individual place winners.
And we also have two distinct honors, Mr. Mike Morris, who signed with University of Michigan. Mr. Gibson, Gibby, just signed with Northern Illinois University. And the man that you're looking at that coached him, Coach of the Year, Bill Pope. I hope I didn't miss anyone. Did I get them all right, Pope?
Yeah, I think you got it.
I got them all, thank you. So...
Can we introduce all the, did we introduce everyone that was back here? All the young men by names? Just have them there.
Exactly. About a third of the people. Probably.
Well, just the ones that are here with us.
They all contributed team-wise. They have a large enough team where we could pretty much put any fourteen guys out there. They have a lot of matches all year long, so the fourteen have that. At the end of year, they have their five individual place winners, along with Mike Morris, who has three times, state champions. Anthony Gibson, who's had his finals. And then I just lost her, who was also a two-time state place winner. And nephew, Brett Holt, who's also a state placeer this year. And then Caleb Neekin. It's a fortunate station here, so...
Thank you so very much. And Mr. Cox has something for you. He's right behind you.
I do. And Coach, congratulations on a great season. As the father of a former John Glenn wrestler, are the practices still as easy as they always were? Congratulations on fine work, especially considering some of the opponents who came up next week. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you all so very much. Your outside, they will take your picture and put you on the website. Thank you again for representing Wayne Westland so well.
Thank you so much. You guys look really good in your shirts.
And how to walk into a room real tough. Did you teach them that walk, Mr. Pope?
And as Sarah exit, the next group is our R O T C cadets with Sergeant Bigford.
Third place in arm knockout, knockout. Cadet Major Smitz placed third place in, where's his second place? Third place in individual knockout. Cadet Lieutenant Murphy placed fourth place in arm knockout. Trying to remember all this off the top of my head now. I'm old. Command Sergeant Major Hopebrook placed second in knockout, would have played first had he shaved. Arlette, one of first-year cadet, Cadet Corporal Allen placed fourth place in first-year knockout. And that's it.
Most times you will see me at cadet challenges and knockouts. When somebody lets me know where to go. He's hiding. When somebody lets me know when the competitions are.
Oh, yeah. You got, you know, many stuff. I think that is a great thing to do, you know. Well, if it's anything better, if it's something like, I'll see you at a competition with the board. Oh, well, you guys are performing, and you are winning, and, um, so I'm happy to come over to myself, and I'd like to offer our congratulations on your accomplishment this year, and we have no one that's like me, or, you know. You got to do your work, and I expect you to be happy. Right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Dr. Holt, thank you for giving us the opportunity to showcase our children in the district and what they're doing, and people need to know that our kids are doing great things here in Wayne Westland, and it also makes the board feel good. With everything that's going on in the world, these are the things that make us smile, and so we appreciate you taking the time out to come and be with us this evening. So moving on, we're going to go to item number 358.18, Citizen Comments, Agenda Items Only. Do we have anyone that wants to speak on Agenda Items Only? Okay. Moving on to item number 359.18, Consent Agenda. At this time, I'll take a motion. The move, supported by Mrs. Hines, supported by Ms. Madison. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
At the record show seven zero. Thank you. Motion carries. Item number 360.18, Board of Education Committee Report. So we're going to start with the Finance Committee. Is that you, Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Okay.
The following is a brief summary of minutes of the Finance Committee held on April 23rd, 2018. In attendance, Dr. Shelley Holt, Superintendent, Tom Buckaloo, Board Trustee, David Cox, Board Trustee, Fred Weaver, Board Trustee, Tony Spiezak, Executive Director, Bill Weinrausch, T M P Architecture, and Carrie Matysik, Matzik, Administrative Assistant. The discussion was redesigning John Glenn High School parking lot. Buses will travel behind the William D. Ford Career Tech Center and no longer through the parking lots of John Glenn High School. It was recommended that the bid be awarded to S and J Asphalt. Stormwater issues included and remove and replace asphalt maintenance since there is no addition to John Glenn High School parking lot. Bill Weinrausch from T M P gave a presentation of the grounds that will be affected. Construction is recommended to begin on June 18th, 2018. The meeting was adjourned by Dr. Holt at 5:39 PM.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Item B is the Policy Committee. Is that Ms. Hines, or is it, I'm not sure.
Ms. Madison. Okay.
Ms. Madison?
The following is a brief summary of the minutes from the Policy Committee meeting held on May 1st, 2018. The meeting was called to order at 2:35 PM. In attendance was Dr. Shelley Holt, the Superintendent, Melody Hines, Board Trustee, myself, Sally Madison, Board Trustee, and Dr. Fred Weaver, Board Trustee, in substitution for Carol Madell, Dr. Stephanie Barrage, Wayne County Risa, and Tamara Phoenix, Administrative Assistant. Discussion, it was discussed that the district tries to do board retreats at least twice a year or four half-days per year. Discuss the possibility of office of treasurer be the two-year term. It was recommended that one board member be liaison for the bond issue. Wayne Risa provides consulting services free of charge to school districts. Policies are drafted by specific companies such as Neola, Michigan Leadership Institute, and M A S B. As laws change, these companies bring the changes to the board for approval and up-to-date with current and previous policies. Determine the financial feasibility to use an attorney of one of the specified companies, creating a spreadsheet that does show how the district could benefit from each company and the service it has to offer. Discussion was held in reference to better communication between the community and the board. One possible way of getting this started is for new members of the board to have a mentor for support. A second possible way to help flow the communication is to have a quote-unquote "meet and greet" for the superintendent and the board, which could possibly be held with the schools, when the schools hold their open houses. A pamphlet to explain what the role is of the Board of Education was also discussed to be passed out in the community and at functions. The community questioned if there's a communication, the committee questioned if there was communication protocol, policy, or procedure in place, and the committee would like to develop a protocol regarding how parent concerns are addressed to ensure better two-way communication between and the committee would like to develop a protocol regarding how parent concerns are addressed to ensure better two-way communication between the district and parents, and draft policy was included for review. The next steps are to set up a meet and greet with the Superintendent and the Board of Education, a pamphlet that explains what the role of the Board of Education, training for the President and Vice President, 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 excuse me, parent communication, services offered by Neola, Michigan Leadership Institute, and M A S B Policy Committee, and draft of Concerns Communication Procedure. The meeting was adjourned at four thirty P.M.
Thank you, Mrs. Madison. Moving on to item number three, six, one point one eight, Review and Approval Business Services and Finance Items, Mr. Larson Schiler.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Uh, first resolution is for the purchase of Chromebook computers at the schools listed on pages thirty-four and thirty-five. A review of the inventory of the computers at all locations was performed identifying areas of need as listed on pages thirty-six and thirty-seven in your agenda. The purchases from Title I funds as approved by Michigan Department of Education.
Thank you, at this time I'll take a motion. Moved by Ms. Hines, supported by Mr. Cox, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
At the record show seven zero.
Thank you, motion carries, item B please.
Okay, thank you again, Madam President. Uh, as trustee Weaver had just went over the minutes, I'm not going to go over those again, but, uh, we did perform a traffic study, um, and as a result of the congestion at the front of the school at John Glenn, uh, we believe that the routing, rerouting of the, uh, buses and the cars will improve traffic flow and increase safety concerns, or limit safety concerns. Uh, the funding is from the district's sinking fund.
All right, at this time I'll take a motion.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Cox. Support by Mrs. Hines, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
At the record show seven zero.
Thank you, motion carries, item C please.
Okay, thank you again, uh, item C is to replace a non-functioning oven in, uh, Career Tech. Funding is from Career Tech sixty-one A State Funding.
Moved by Mr. Cox, any support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Hines, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
At the record show seven zero.
Thank you, motion carries, and item D please.
Okay, thank you again, uh, the computers are purchased in consultation with CTE's Advisory Committee. Uh, purchase is from sixty-one A Career Tech State Funding and is a sole source award.
Thank you, this time I'll take a motion. Moved by Ms., Mrs., Ms. Madison, any support? Support by Mrs. Medel, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
At the record show seven zero.
Thank you, motion carries, thank you, Mr. Larson Schiler.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number three, six, two point one eight, Review and Approval Wayne County Regional Educational Services Agency Wayne RISA Their Budget Resolution, Dr. Holt.
Thank you, Madam President, so on pages forty-two through fifty-eight of your packet, you have the, uh, typical annual review of the Wayne RISA, uh, budget resolution, and we have to adopt this, uh, in order to continue with our, our services and support from Wayne RISA.
At this time I'll take a motion. Moved by Mrs. Madison, supported by Mr. Cox, any discussion? Um, Mrs., um, Mrs. Medel?
A- as usual, I usually point this out every single year about the act at eighteen money, that this is a big chunk of money that's sitting there, and the, uh, reason, uh, when I ask about it is that they're concerned about chargebacks because this happened to them and they got caught short. Probably about ten years ago, I wanna say, so they have been stockpiling money into this account, now granted, they've been very generous in sending us money each year, uh, to help with our special ed transportation, but that's still a lot of money sitting there, uh, in their account that I think needs to be dispersed even more to local school districts to help support our special ed program, so that, that's my only comment about this budget.
Okay, any other discussion, Mr. Buckaloo?
I just have to second that, that, uh, that sentiment, uh, their fund balance exceeds their, their annual revenue, so it really could loosen up a bit.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Medel?
Yeah.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
At the record show seven zero.
Thank you, motion carries. Item number three, six, three point one eight, Review and Approval of Human Resource Items, Ms. Simmons.
Hi, thank you, Madam President, I present to you for review and approval, uh, the Principal for Adams Upper Elementary School, Ms. Angela Zaley. If you would, uh, turn to page fifty-nine, her data sheet is listed. Angie has degrees from Eastern Michigan University as well as the University of Phoenix, um, Education Administration and Supervision is her most recent. She has, um, served in Taylor Public Schools as a teacher, Wayne Westland Schools as a math intervention specialist, and most recently as Assistant Principal at Stevenson Middle School.
At this time I'll take a motion.
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Madison, supported by Ms. Hines.
No, I'm Medel, I'm sorry, I'm getting the Ms. mixed up. It's gonna be a real surprise to Mr. Madison.
So, uh, the motion that was put on the floor by Mrs. Medel, it was supported by Ms. Hines, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
At the record show seven zero.
Congratulations. I know that you're, um, you've been the district, so I know you tell everybody, welcome to this group, well, congratulations on your new assignment, um, would you like to speak to us?
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you to Dr. Holt, President Walker, and the board, uh, for trusting me with our babies over at Adams. Um, I'm super excited to be a part of the Adams family.
Okay. Will that work?
There are amazing students and families and teachers and support staff in that building, so I'm just really, really blessed that you guys are giving me this opportunity, I wanna say thank you.
Thank you.
You got a good, good principal over there too.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes, you can.
Since Angie's been here for a while, she knows how hard we work, but it's always for the kids, and I wanted to let you know how impressed I am of the communication that's been coming out of the building, because it hasn't always been for coming to the board, and so thank you very much for keeping us posted as to what's going on in the building.
Did you bring someone with you?
I brought my cousin, Todd.
Okay. Cause our spouses are just as much, um, to do with the family and they are our backbone, without our spouses, we wouldn't be able to do it, so, yes. So, um, we're gonna move on to item B.
Thank you, Madam President, I present Erin Eaton, um, for Recommendation for Assistant Principal Position at Adams Upper Elementary School. Erin's data sheet can be found on page sixty, Erin, uh, has degrees from Eastern Michigan, Mary Grove, and Central Michigan, um, University, and she most recently has been a teacher in Gibraltar School District.
Okay, at this time I'll take a motion.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Madison, supported by Mr. Cox, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Walker?
Yes.
At the record show seven zero.
Thank you, motion carries, congratulations and welcome to the Wayne Westland family.
Dr. Holt, members of the board and community, I came here very excited to accept this position and jump on board, and after being at this meeting tonight and seeing the incredible accomplishments of things that are happening in this district, I'm going home much more excited, so I thank you for this opportunity. I ensure you that I will do everything in my power to make sure that there's continuous improvement at Adams and that student success is across the board.
Thank you.
Look forward to it, and thank you.
Ms. Eaton, did you bring anyone with you?
I brought my husband, Ken. Hi, welcome.
Thank you so much.
I look forward to it.
Thank you.
And item C.
Thank you, Madam President, I'm asking board for approval on the following administration, um, recommendations, Daniel Drian for the Garage Supervisor, Sarah Fawcett for Payroll Supervisor, and Kimberly Markey, Grants Supervisor.
All right, at this time I'll take a motion.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Cox. Support by Ms. Hines, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Madison?
Abstain.
Uh, Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
At the record show six one?
So, no, it's six, six, um, yes, and then one abstain, abstain.
Six, yes, and one abstain.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item number three, six, four point one eight, Head Start Monthly Report, Mrs. Medel.
No. Uh, as required by federal law, all of you received a copy of the monthly Head Start, uh, financial report, uh, at your place this evening. If you take a look at it, have any questions, please call the people who are listed there, Mrs. Ely is over at Stottlemyre, and, uh, Priya is in our Business Department. Our trustees can expect to receive a Head Start report for April and May at the June meeting. I need a motion to accept.
At this time, will we take a motion to accept Mrs. Medel's report? Uh, moved by Ms. Madison, supported by Mr. Cox, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
At the record show seven zero.
Thank you, motion carries, item number three, six, five point one eight, Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Madam President, uh, first of all, I wanna say thank you to all the families who brought their children here, none of what we do is possible without our parents. I also cannot, uh, and I, when I say parents, I mean parents, grandparents, the guardians, the aunties, that, cause there's always somebody that has to help out, and as a working mother myself, and having kids that are involved, we always have to rely on that person next to us to sometimes pick a kid up from practice or take him to practice, so I wanna thank this entire community for making what happens even possible with our kids, cause we can't do anything extra without our parents and our families. Um, as we enter the week of the teacher, um, or the celebration of educators, I, I wanted to acknowledge the hard work and the sacrifice our teachers, our social workers, our psychologists, and educators of every kind have made for our students, for our families, for our communities, and for one another. Earlier today, I was asked, uh, what my best day in education was, and I had to think about it, because as I started to ruffle through my memory of all the students that I had helped, and the late nights wondering about whether or not they were okay, the, the difference, the peanut butter sandwiches I used to keep in my drawer for my kids, along with, you know, all kinds of other toiletries and supplies, uh, for, cause sometimes we'd have kids there a little late, or they might come a little early, I started to think about the families that, that, um, had, that I had served, that had served me and made me the educator that I am, and, uh, the many lifelong colleagues that I met, many of which, as you know, in the education world, your colleagues end up becoming your, your kids' aunties and uncles, because that's who we are, we, we become a family as educators, and I don't want to let this week go by without, um, thanking our educators and the work that they have put in for all of our kids and our families. As I reflected on that day, um, that was asked about, uh, me this morning, I remember the day that I signed the paper that I was not going to medical school, and I was going to stay in education, and it was the day that, as my dad told me, it broke his heart, uh, because he wanted to see me be a doctor, um, and of course, you know, some families aren't familiar with the fact that they're doctors of education, my family was one of them, we didn't know that at the time, and his mind, I was throwing away my Berkeley education to go and teach kids in the hood, as he told me, and he's like, I didn't pay for that degree for you to go do that, um, but as he was, as he died last year, he, he told me, he said, you know what, you made a decision based on what you love, and I found a profession that I was good at, and I loved, and we didn't do it for any, I didn't do it for the money, I didn't do it for the recognition, I did it because I loved seeing the look on my kids' faces, I did it because I loved being able to help a colleague, I lov, I did it because when I was struggling as a teacher from time to time, and I would go, now, how am I gonna teach this writing lesson, and, and they can't, why can't they just put the commas where they're supposed to be, and starting a letter with a capital should not be something I have to tell eighth graders, or studying a sentence with a capital, it should not be, but I still was doing those things, and when I would get frustrated and feel like there was no tomorrow, there would be a colleague there to go, you know what, I was Jones at the time, they would say, you know what, it's all right, we can do it together, how can I help? How can I help, how can I support, that's a profession I am proud to be a member of, it is a profession that I am proud to lead this district, and I am proud of every one of our educators of all levels. I had a meeting with a pair of educators recently in this very room, and I told them, you are educators, don't let anybody tell you different. So with this week, we celebrate our teachers, our social workers, our psychologists, our occupational therapists, our physical therapists, all of these different people who come together to do the great work for our kids, and I want each and every one of them to know from the bottom of my, of my heart, that from the day I started this job, until we have the pay that matches what we want, I will not stop, this board will not stop, this executive cabinet will not stop, until we are able to make sure that you know how much we appreciate you, not just with words and with tokens of appreciation, but truly by moving our budget to a place where we can, uh, afford to, to give everything that we can to, to show you how much we care. So with that, I ask that our community remember all of the sacrifices, remember the nights when we're all thinking that teachers are done, just because they've left the building does not mean they're not thinking about our kids, just because it's the weekend does not mean that we're not at an event, or we're not at the ROTC dealio, or the wrestling match, or whatever it is, we go above and beyond, and just know that and appreciate our teachers, um, and so that little extra something, sometimes it's just a card, or a note, or just somebody walking up to say thank you, as a teacher and an educator, you have no idea how much that means to us, cause sometimes that's, that's all we need, we just need a little bit of a thank you, and, and you, and just know that, and, um, I ask that our community truly celebrate our community in the excellent style that Wayne Westland can do. Couple of other notes, um, it's assessment time, and a lot of our students are embarking upon a very, uh, challenging series of assessments. As a parent and community member, I encourage each and every one of you, if you have a few moments, to go online and try to take some of the sample assessments that our students are taking. It would blow your mind how challenging it is, as I walked around the building on the day of S A T testing at John Glenn, and they were about halfway through, um, and honestly, I can't even recall why, what, what the purpose was for us being there, but some reason I was in the hallway, and, uh, the kids were walking out, and they were just shaking their heads, and they're like, it's just long, it's a long test, and it's a, it's very hard for them to think at a high level for an extended period of time, so just know that we might have to give our kids a little bit extra, make sure they get to bed early at night, make sure they're not overstressing about these exams, they are important, but we need to make sure that they know what it is that they need to do to move forward. Um, uh, when it comes to the safety and security, we had an excellent social media forum last week, we have not let up on our focus on safety and security for our community and our schools, and so please know that that is still on the forefront of our minds, uh, I'm sure you saw in the, uh, paper about, um, that we were able to, uh, address one of the issues. One thing I wanna point out for our community is that because of FERPA laws, we are not able to comment when a student's name is released, so it wasn't that the district did not wanna give a comment, but we do not comment, once a student's name is released, we literally stay away from it for our protection of your tax dollars and our district and community, uh, but when the police, uh, for our FERPA rights, a student is a minor until they turn eighteen, for the police, a student is a minor at, uh, only until they're seventeen, and so there's a bit of a gap there where the police can say things that we as a district cannot, so please know it's not that we're trying to not say anything about issues, but in the interest of protecting our district, once a student's name is released, we cannot comment, um, in any way, shape, or form, we just stay clear of that. Finally, I wanna, uh, implore with our community to contact your legislators regarding the, um, issues around our thirty-one A funding and what we're looking at with the third, third grade reading law, uh, if you need more information about that, I would invite you to go to our website, but right now, on the floor are, are a couple of, of bills around our thirty-one A legislation, and it's not that we do not want accountability for our schools and the results that we get for children, but we wanna make sure that that accountability does not hurt us being able to provide services for our children, and it's important for us to speak up in Lansing and let them know, um, I was in Lansing two weeks ago, we had a group that was in Lansing last Tuesday speaking on this, we have several of our organizations that are speaking. We have several of our organizations that are speaking up. And I just want to make sure it's very clear that with the 31A funding, we have to be very careful about how we implement the third-grade reading law to ensure that it doesn't hinder us being able to provide the supports that we know our kids need. With that, I would say again, thank you so much to our teachers and invite you all to the many celebrations, May and June are a month of celebration. We have many coming up and we hope to see you at all of, we and the Board of Education hope to see you at all of them. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. And I think that it was very important that to let our teachers and all our employees know how important they are to us. And just to piggyback, I was on Facebook, I wish I could think of it. Check, there's a lot of places that's offering like free meals and stuff. So take advantage of your week and get your IDs and go and see and get those things, those goodies. So thank you again for that. I appreciate that. So moving on to item number three-six-six-point-one-eight, Citizen Comments, Non-Agenda Items. So you had your hand up?
Yeah.
Okay. So what I'm going to have you do is if you can go to the stand and give your name and which city you live in. And then there's going to be a blue form.